Good evening and welcome to this evening's October eighth, twenty twenty four, City Council meeting. This meeting is hereby called to order at seven P M. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person McHale?
Here.
Bud Matts?
Present.
O'Brien?
Here.
Veneziano?
Here.
Uche?
Here.
Reyes?
Here.
Kohler?
Present.
Mayor Sunnike?
Yes, with seven present and none absent, there is a quorum this evening. First item of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, and we have September tenth, twenty twenty four, City Council meeting minutes before us. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Alright, hearing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. This then brings us to the mayor's report this evening. I just wanted to have everyone in the city of Rolling Meadows know that October is pedestrian safety awareness month, and tomorrow, Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty four, is the walk and roll to school day. So please be extra aware of pedestrians and cyclists on the roads, and perhaps consider trying out any of the many bike paths in Rolling Meadows that connect people to work, school, and other modes of transportation before winter hits the Midwest. Are there any ward reports this evening? Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, we did have our Economic Development Committee meeting last night. We were short of a quorum, but we were able to give an official or unofficial thumbs up for Mr. Ken Yun, who came to the committee asking for the retail incentive, that for Mission Eyes, it's a new optical store located in the Squire Shopping Center, and that will be coming onto the City Council, I believe, in November for final review.
Thank you very much. Are there any other ward reports this evening? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to our pending ordinances. First item of business is item A, which is ordinance number twenty-four dash forty-two, which is to establish the date and hours of trick-or-treating for Halloween in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this ordinance? Alright, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to item B, ordinance number twenty-four dash forty-three, to establish convenience fees for electronic payments in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Uche for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item C, ordinance number twenty-four dash forty-four, is to modify procedural requirements for subdivisions in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman Uche for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda are our consent ordinances in for first reading, which consists of six items D through I. Does any alter person wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances for discussion? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
I wish for discussion E and item F.
Alright, any others? Okay. Seeing no additionals, then the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the four ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you Alderman Veneziano for the first and Alderman, who was that?
Bud Matts, O'Brien.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien for the second. This consists of item D, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, which is to update the tobacco, vape, and CBD shop regulations. Item G, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, which is to amend the city's zoning ordinance to authorize assisted living memory care housing as a special use in the C two corridor commercial zoning district. Item H, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, to approve a subdivision, special use permit, and variations for twenty-eight oh one and twenty-eight oh five Algonquin Road, Plum Creek Assisted Living. And lastly, item I, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, to approve the First Amendment to Communications Water Tower lease agreement with Sprintcom LLC for thirty-two hundred Campbell Street. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, those ordinances will be moved for second reading. This brings us back to item E, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, which is to ban retail sale of THC kratom and tien pentane in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Uche for the first.
Second.
And thank you Alder Person Veneziano for the second. Alder Person Kohler, you had polled this, so you get first comment.
Yes, this is probably a question of clarification from City Manager. One of the definitions you have in here is a total concentration of THC greater than point three percent. This is for hemp-derived THC products. I am on page thirty-two of a packet.
Thank you.
Are you there?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you. You know, the definition spanned the sale of THC kratom and tien pentane. It has hemp-derived products is defined as beside the intended human or animal consumption. B says total concentration of THC concentration greater than point three percent dry weight for any intermediate or finished plant product or materials, or any product intended for consumption by inhalation of smoking. So I get what that means for hemp-related product, but that would by definition include cannabis sales. If we ban this under that definition, we would be banning cannabis sales, and I believe we do have cannabis sales permitted within the city. So how do we separate that out?
So there is in section two C, under exceptions, there is a exemption for the sale of cannabis. So it is under exception B, any product regulated by the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Program Act or the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, the prohibitions of this section do not apply. So with respect to the definition, while the defined term of THC is included, we explicitly included this exception so that it does not, by approval of this ordinance, impact the ability for recreational medical cannabis to be sold within the community.
Alright, so, alright, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Yep.
Of course.
Thank you Alder Person Kohler. Are there any additional comments or questions for staff this evening? Okay, are there any other questions or comments from council regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, then the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading. This brings us to item F, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-zero, which is to update nuisance and nuisance abatement provisions in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Again, Alderman Kohler, you had polled this, so you get the first comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, probably more of a point of clarification from City Manager. Under the area, one of the areas in this proposed ordinance is new storm water managed, storm water nuisance regulations. In reading through it, considering issues within Ward seven that deal with storm water management, and you're probably familiar with the area I'm talking about, would this place a burden on that project that we're talking about as being a nuisance? It's on private property, by the definition, it's within private property and all that kind of stuff that's in there. Would that area be considered a nuisance requiring maintenance by the owner?
So my response to that is no. The term nuisance and the way that it is applied in an enforcement capacity is to work to rectify an ongoing issue that's creating, for lack of better terms, a nuisance to neighboring or area residents or the general population. In this instance, the application of a stormwater nuisance could be a scenario in which there is intentional changes made to the way that water will flow through a designed stormwater system. There's different sections of the code that would apply to that, but if it is generally, if intentional changes to a stormwater detention system or drainage system would cause an impact to upstream drainage or downstream drainage, not only would we be able to use the city's drainage code to enforce, but we could also establish and declare a nuisance which carries an additional burden for the, for both the owner or the respondent, whoever is dealing with, whoever is responsible for that issue, as well as the city's ability to enforce and ultimately rectify that situation. So as it pertains to the specific scenario over there, that would not rise to what we would define as a nuisance. That's more so just a maintenance issue, not a nuisance.
Okay, I get that. I think I understand the intention of this ordinance. In fact, item Q on the list is a city-owned area that may be considered close to being a nuisance, on the Kennedy Pond. My main concern, and I will look at this again before our second reading and discussion, and maybe have a discussion with you, City Manager and Mayor, to make sure that we're not putting a burden on erosion issues that is going to be continuously increasing in this community in the, whatever we have, nine miles of Salt Creek frontage. And in there, it does talk about erosion as being one of the nuisances, you know, unattended erosion issues. So we got to be careful that we're not putting an undue burden on our people who have land along the creeks or the tributaries to our creek, and considering them a nuisance when they are trying to do their best to keep up with that creek erosion that's going to continue on there. So let's just take a look at that before we get to second reading, and I'll maybe discuss it with the mayor and you between now and the second reading.
Yeah, we can certainly add a little more definition and refinement to the way that we apply the erosion component of the way that we've drafted this up. So yeah, we're happy to take a look at that.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that concerns me is that in one of the definitions in the law, defines water as a common enemy of which everybody is fighting, and we are fighting it. It's going to get worse, and we just got to be careful we're not putting a burden on our citizens that you're a nuisance rather than the fact that we're trying to fight this thing. So that's my only concern, let's take a look at that clarification a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Kohler. Is there any other comments or questions from the council this evening regarding this item? Alright, seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading. This brings us to our new business, and for item J, we're looking for a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve this warrant?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Reyes for the first and Alderman Veneziano for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant? Alright, hearing none, then the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this warrant is approved. This then brings us to our consent resolutions for the evening, which consist of nine items, items K through S. Does any alter person wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Yes, Alderman McHale?
Item Q, please.
Are there any others? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
Item O, and I will join with item Q.
Any others? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts?
Item S.
Any others this evening? Okay, hearing none, then the six remaining, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the six remaining resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you Alderman Uche for the first and Alderman Veneziano for the second. This starts with item K, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash seventy-six, which is to approve the annual maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for the city's ERP software. Item L, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash seventy-seven, which is to authorize the purchase core network switching upgrade equipment through Sientl Solutions LLC. Item M, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash seventy-eight, to adopt the update to the Cook County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item N, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash seventy-nine, just to award a contract for professional engineering services to assist the city of Rolling Meadows with the water main replacement on Algonquin Parkway to Chorba Group, not to exceed the amount of sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Item P, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty-one, to authorize the purchase of replacement computers for the annual computer replacement plan. And lastly, item R, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty-three, which is to approve payment of funds to the state of Illinois for ground emergency medical transport. The question is, shall the six resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With six in favor, I'm sorry, with seven in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This brings us first to item O, is there a motion to consider resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty, which is to approve and authorize the execution of an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, between the city of Rolling Meadows and the Inverness Fire Protection District regarding the sharing of fire apparatus? So, thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Remind me again, O was polled by?
Kohler.
Alderman Kohler, thank you. Alderman Kohler, you have the first comment.
So it's more of a question here, do we have an agreement already in place with the Inverness Fire Protection District?
City Manager?
Yep, so the city currently has an agreement between Inverness Fire Protection District, the Village of Palatine, and our city, which we refer to as the RPM Agreement. It's a multi-jurisdictional response and equipment sharing essentially agreement. The apparatus agreement that is before the council today is not a component of the RPM Agreement documents, but we have recommended establishing such an agreement. As from time to time, there are requests made by the Inverness Fire Protection District for loaning and usage of equipment. So we wanted to make sure that we had protections in place, both for them and for us, in instances where such a loan occurs. And this is typically a standard procedure that exists amongst fire departments.
Do we have a similar, do we include in that the rural Palatine District?
Inverness used, so Inverness and Palatine Rural are the same thing. It's just been, their name has changed from Palatine Rural Fire Protection District to Inverness.
Oh, that was my confusion. That's my confusion, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. That was a recent change, so.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions or comments for staff regarding item O? Alright, hearing none, the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person Veneziano?
Yes.
Uche?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Bud Matts?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to item Q, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty-two, which is to approve a contract with Paizo and Associates for improvements to Kennedy Pond Shoreline and Vegetation Management in a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-one thousand ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents, and a three-year stewardship in a not-to-exceed amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and no cents. Looking for a motion to approve this resolution? Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman McHale, you had polled this, so you have the first comment.
Yes, Kennedy Brothers Pond has been an issue for many years in my ward, and we had some residents come out today, and I was hoping that maybe Director Graskov could give a little bit of a background on what we're voting on this evening.
Absolutely, so there's multiple stages actually to what the work is planned for Kennedy Pond coming up here. One of the major components of it is the native tallgrass plantings that we have, or shorter tallgrass plantings, if you prefer. That's going to be planted around the bank, it's going to help stabilize. Also, it has the additional benefit of kind of removing some of the nutrients that go into that from the surrounding areas that go into the pond, and hopefully that will reduce the algae blooms that we see there. So we have a few benefits regarding that. And then with the improved aeration system that we're putting in, there's going to be additional diffusers, a new aeration system. So we're going to see a bigger, kind of more fountain-like feature there, and hopefully that will also reduce a little bit of the algae bloom that we see coming through. Additionally, there's going to be a lot of native vegetation along the bike path area, and that's going to kind of keep, again, more of a bank stabilization that we're looking to see. Because obviously, as you can see from some of the pictures, the bank itself is not sustaining with the turf grass that we have in there. We're seeing some erosion, so we're taking a more of a proactive action to have a little bit more of a natural bank stabilization than you would see with riprap or a turf grass mow.
Thank you. I do believe that this is a pretty solid plan, so, and thank you very much to you and public works for working on that for us.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the council regarding this item? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
So this has been a topic that the Environmental Committee has also had a lot of discussions with your ward, who are in favor of this proposal. I do think that the main issue, if I'm not correct, is algae. It's a key issue in that pond, algae, and so we want to make sure that whatever we're doing there has some impact on the algae. Whatever we're planting there needs to be sure is, you said it correctly, nutrient-absorbing, so it prevents that. And if residents aren't here, maybe they can answer this, but you know, shoreline and all that kind of stuff is important, but if we're not addressing the main issue over there, it's algae. So let's make sure whatever we're doing does that. The second thing is, the Environmental Committee has had discussions of this over the past two years that I've been involved in, so they'll be happy to know this. So I would recommend approving this with the, approve and inform the Environmental Committee of its status.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts?
So the contract is very front-end loaded, and then there's three years where there's only seven hundred and fifty dollars roughly worth of service being performed. And I'm curious if this group, if this locks us into this particular vendor, if there's any other work that needs to be done there that we choose to do at that time, that we're required to use this vendor to do it as a result of the fact that they have a contract with us to maintain that.
Excellent question. So as far as the three-year stewardship goes, essentially what that is, it's, you said seven hundred and fifty dollars, it's per month to maintain the, to maintain the. uh, to main the, the, to maintain the, uh, natural plantings that we have in that area. Uh, so we would expect them to, to complete that work. If there was anything outside and above that we wanted to do with Kennedy Pond, uh, we are not locked in to this contractor. Um, and at any time, uh, we can, we can terminate the agreement with them, we're not beholden to them specifically for three years. Uh, and we did put in the Council Action Summary Report that we're gonna monitor, uh, how the, the plantings are doing, uh, how the stewardship is, is moving along, and if there's any point that we feel, okay, we're comfortable now kind of taking over this and maintaining it on our own, we can, we can pull back on that stewardship and then lessen the amount that we would go with the contract.
Thank you very much.
Um, so earlier Alderman Kohler had requested that since there are residents who are here from Ward One regarding this item, I would like to, um, uh, have the council make a motion to open up the floor for those residents to state their name and any additional comment they would like for this item.
So moved.
Oh, not, uh, okay, so that was all at once. So I got one, uh, motion from, uh, or first sorry, from Alderman Veneziano, and then the second I heard from Alderman O'Brien. Um, so the floor is open for those residents. If you'd like to approach, please just state your name. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on one second. My, my clerk here has reminded me that we need a voice vote for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the floor is now open for our residents to speak.
Okay, my name's Jim Batla. I'm over at fifty-four oh three Grove Side Lane. Have been, uh, one of the original residents there from before there was a pond, when it used to be just a, uh, creek. And during the change from a creek to the, uh, retention area that is, uh, it's been in two different phases, um, there was a study done by, uh, Corps of Engineers. It was gonna be retention or detention. And it was decided that, um, detention was not an option because of the implications of the way it would impact downstream would flood. Over the years, the depth of the pond has changed dramatically. It used to be ten feet deep, there was areas that were as deep as twenty feet deep. Now it's, there's nothing there. And I think that is one of the major reasons of contributing to, um, not only to algae, but the plant, plant growth that's, uh, taking place in the pond. So I, somewhere, the, uh, Corps of Engineers study has to be available to you. And I think that's something that should be investigated. As far as what was the original intent and how is it currently complying with that?
Thank you. Do you have any additional comment before we close the floor?
The, I guess the only com- other comment is that it seems like the, um, the treatment that you're proposing is questionable because of the upstream contributions to the nutrients and so forth. So no matter what you plant around the perimeter of that pond, uh, what's coming from upstream is still gonna impact what's there.
Okay. And the reason that I just asked for the, for the full comment, thank you, is, um, so I know that as Alderman Koh- Kohler had mentioned, that the Environmental Committee has been reviewing this item for over two years. And some of those meeting minutes will also include a presentation from the city engineer, which I believe did look at the history of that particular space. I'm getting a, a nod from our, uh, Public Works engineer, as, I'm sorry, my, our Public Works, uh, director as well. Um, Director Graskopf, if there's anything else that you wanted to include, um, as a response to the comment that we had this evening for the record, please do so.
Um, just, just to reiterate that what you had said was correct, we do have a study that was done by Christopher Burke Engineering on the pond depth. Um, it's, it's the first time I'm hearing that it was ten to twenty feet deep, um, originally, so we're gonna take a look at that as well as try to dig up the Army Corps of Engineering study.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this resolution? Yes, Alderman McHale?
Um, I'm sorry.
Alderman McHale?
I do think that this is at least a good first step in what we're trying to fix with the algae as of right now. And then as we get more information, maybe we can revisit this again with a different plan or look or whatever the case may be. But a- as of right now, I think that this plan is a solid one to, um, uh, address the algae issues that we've been getting calls on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there another comment? Yes, Alderman Kohler, second, uh, second and final bite.
Yes, second and final bite, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, resident, uh, who spoke here is absolutely correct, there's a chemistry issue here, which is coming from upstream. Meaning, if you ever look at, uh, Harper, Harper's retention system, um, that will get very heavy in algae. Um, and it's really about the landscape, uh, fertilizers and everything that's feeding down. You're correct, you're absolutely correct, until we address that. So even though this may help mitigate some of it, which is the immediate retention of nutrients coming in from the shoreline around there, we still have to continue to keep this on the agendas because of what's coming downstream from upstream at the, um, in, in the creek, which includes the, um, Harper retention ponds and everything up there, which is feeding us, feeding, everything's feeding downstream to this pond. And we still have to keep this on the agenda to monitor it, as well as the Environmental Committee to continue to review this as we go forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, hearing no additional comments, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to our final item, item S, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash eighty-four, to authorize an intergovernmental agreement or IGA for school resource officers with community consolidated school district fifteen. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman McHale for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman Budmats, you had polled this item for consideration, you have the first comment.
Actually, I, I thought I pulled Q, but as long as we're in, yes. Um, I noticed one crazy typo, um, in here, it said that we would, um, we would do something to the, to the satisfaction of District eighty-six, which is not the district in question, it's District fifteen. So I'm trying to find the page in particular where it says it. Um, but, um, it was just a typo. I happen to notice, but I thought I was actually pulling Q, so.
Oh, okay. So it looks like it's in the exhibit, uh, under exhibit A.
Number eight, yeah.
Yeah, number eight, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll work with the district to make sure we get that corrected.
Okay, yeah, but I was actually pulling Q, so, um, so we can vote on six, but that's just a, a note that when I read it, I saw it was eighty-six and I'm like, oh, well, I don't know how we're gonna do that.
Good catch, eagle eyes. So that just leaves us then for a, uh, approval of this resolution then to move forward with the typo corrected, um, from District eighty-six to District fifteen. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This brings us to our other business and reports. And the first that we have here are several mayoral appointments, and it consists of three new appointments and five reappointments. Does any older person wish to remove any appointee from the list for discussion? Okay, hearing none, the chair declares, declares it in order for one motion to consider the three new appointments and five reappointments in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Veneziano for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. The list we have before us is for Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Bhavik Modi, it was the new reappointment, and Lee Firstine, which is a reappointment. For our Capital Projects Committee, we have Bill Sucheky in for a new appointment, as well as Scott Slezak in for a new appointment. Our Board of Trustees Police Pension Fund is going to be seeing Molly Tockington reappointed to the committee, as well as for our Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Tom Callard. The Economic Development Committee will see a reappointment of Linda Ballantyne, and our Environmental Committee will see a reappointment of Maggie Trevor. At this point, the, will the clerk please call the roll for the approvals of these appointments?
Alderperson Boucher?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, these appointments are appointed. There are no mayoral proclamations this evening, nor a city clerk's report, but we do have several city staff reports, beginning with our community items of interest, to which I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. Help the Rolling Meadows High School Mustangs pack the food pantry with cereal boxes. Donations of sealed cereal boxes are appreciated as the mighty Mustangs compete with the Elk Grove, with Elk Grove High School to collect the most by halftime at their football game on Friday, October twenty-fifth. Bring in your donation to the City Hall lobby, the Rolling Meadows High School main lobby, or to any home football games until October twenty-fifth. The Rolling Meadows Human Services Team cordially invites you to attend a special luncheon for a wonderful cause at eleven AM this Thursday, October tenth, at La Mirage Banquets. Help build the Hope Fund, a Rolling Meadows nonprofit organization providing emergency financial assistance, uh, emergency financial support to local survivors of abuse. Tickets are going fast, so please register today at eight four seven eight seven zero two six nine five. Residents of all ages are invited to drop by the Rolling Meadows Fire Department Open House on Saturday, October twelfth, from ten AM to two PM at Fire Station Fifteen located at thirty-two oh one Algonquin Road here in Rolling Meadows. Visitors can get a behind-the-scenes glimpse of life in the fire service with exciting views of fire trucks and equipment, training tactics, and lifesaving services. Other features include station tours, a live burn demonstration, vehicle extrication, touch-a-truck kids' games, and complimentary food and drink. Parking is available next door at La Mirage at thirty-two twenty-three Algonquin Road. For more information, call eight four seven three nine seven three three five two. The city is looking for Rolling Meadows veterans of all ages to attend the complimentary Veterans Dinner on Friday, November eighth, at Meridian Banquets at five PM. This annual event celebrates the city's veterans with a four-course dinner, guest speaker, a veteran gift, live music, professional photographer, and more. All veterans are welcome to bring one guest. Registration is due by Friday, November first, to Assistant to the City Manager Lori Sizak by calling eight four seven eight seven zero nine zero zero five. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have our September twenty twenty-four new business report, and to that I will defer to our Business Development Manager Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce eight new businesses for the month of September, including, um, All That Eyes Corporation doing business as Mission Eyes. That's an independently owned optical store in Squire Court Shopping Center.
Thank you. This also brings us to our October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda, and to that I will defer again to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda is included in tonight's agenda packet. A couple of quick highlights include, um, conducting the city's public hearing on the, uh, library FY twenty twenty-five budget, as well as the city's FY twenty twenty-five budget, in addition to the city and library tax levy. Also on the agenda are the items that are on for second reading for, that were approved on this evening's meeting. Under consent resolutions, uh, one item of note is a request for state legislative action regarding the THC kratom and T- neptene, uh, uh, sale ban that we have, uh, passed on first reading this evening. Um, the draft agenda, um, is subject to be updated and will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act prior to the meeting date. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was the October twenty twenty-second City Council Draft Agenda, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and what do we have for our October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four Committee of the Whole?
Ah, I jumped, I jumped ahead, I apologize.
No worries.
I flipped between the two. Um, for the Committee of the Whole, we have, uh, two items as of right now, the, uh, proposed FY twenty twenty-five library budget presentation, as well as a continued discussion and, uh, slowly getting to the end of our rebranding project. Um, once again, with that agenda, uh, with that agenda, it's subject to, uh, update, but will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act prior to that meeting date.
Thank you, and for those listening at home, we will have a public meeting then regarding our truth in taxation on the twenty-second. And in order to be able to prep for that, it would be great if you also tuned in on October fifteenth to hear, uh, the presentation on the library budget as well. At this time, are there any matters not on the agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none, um, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under section two C one of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion regarding going into closed session this evening? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderperson Reyes?
Yes.
Kohler?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Boucher?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, we will now enter into closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Thank you very much.